Good evening, we'd like to welcome you to our August 15th, 2019 Town Council Meeting. Thank you all for being here and participating. We will turn the time over to Councilmember Peterson right now to assist us with this beautiful and handsome crowd standing right in front of us.
Yes Mayor, thank you. We have a big bunch of scouts here tonight and we're going to be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by my friend Aiden right here to my right, so if you could all stand the flags that way gentlemen, if you could turn and face the flag.
There you go, Aiden.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now if I could have you all introduce yourselves, tell us what your rank is and I think you're, most of you are from the same troop, but maybe tell us what your troops are too, okay? Thank you.
My name is Aiden and I'm a second class and I'm from Troop 286.
My name's Andy, I'm from Troop 286 and I'm a tenderfoot.
My name is Blake, I'm from Troop 286 and my rank is tenderfoot.
My name is Ryan, I'm from Troop 286 and my rank is first class.
My name is Preston Kirby, I am from Troop 286 and I am also first class.
My name is Mason Kirby, I am also in Troop 286 and I'm second class.
My name's Kai, I'm from Troop 286 and I am second class.
My name is Thomas Webb, I'm from Troop 286, I am first class.
Good evening, I am Mary Webb and I am a committee member on Troop 286.
Good evening, my name is David Lucas, I am an assistant scoutmaster from Troop 286.
Good morning, my name is Xander and my troop is 581 and I'm a Weeblo.
My name is Justin, my troop is 581 and I'm a Weeblo.
My name is Nash, I'm from Troop 581 and I'm a Weeblo.
My name's Tate and I am from Group 581 and I'm a Weeblo.
Hi, my name's Jody Hatch and I am the Weeblo leader for 581.
Thank you. Can we give these young men a big round of applause please? Mayor, I think some of these kids just spent some time with you touring the building, is that right?
I think I had a different group, yeah.
Some of you did, yeah? That's awesome. Thanks for being here tonight, you all received a pocket copy of the Constitution, go home and study it and come back next time and we'll test you. Just kidding, just kidding. Thank you all, you can go back to your seats. Thank you.
Thank you Councilmember Peterson and thank you to scouts and especially scout leaders, appreciate it. At this time, we'd like to invite Pastor Mike Henry from Royal View Baptist Church to the podium to offer our invocation there, you are pastor, thank you for being here.
Okay, let us pray. Father in heaven, thank you, we want to give you thanks for our country, we're very thankful for it, we thank you for this town that you've let be, that you've let be established, thank you for our public servants here and I pray that you would continue your blessing on them and that you give them wisdom to guide us in sound policy and good direction for our, for this society and this, the residents here. Lord, thank you for the scouts, I pray your blessing on them, thank you for the athletes here, thank you for their accomplishments as well and we just submit this time to you and continue to guide this town, the affairs of this town and we don't take for granted the safety and we do pray, we thank you for it, but we pray you would continue to give us public safety that we need and stem off the evil that would come upon us and we depend on you Lord, you are sovereign and you, we rule, but we know certainly you overrule and we depend on that and we have respect to that, we thank you and praise you in the name of your son and our Savior Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you Pastor Henry, we appreciate you and all the work that your church does in our community, there are so many churches that do so much and we do have our annual faith summit coming up, so anyone who is participating or watching and has not received their invitation, please let us know, we want to make sure every faith community in Gilbert knows that they are invited and welcome to come and join us at our faith summit, so thank you. At this time, the clerk will conduct the roll call.
Mayor Jim Daniels.
Here.
Vice Mayor Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Bridgette Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Entis.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you Lisa. At this time, we do have one recognition and we will turn the mic over to Councilmember Ray, he is the liaison for our Gilbert Public Schools and so we're grateful that he's here and gonna congratulate all these young men on the front row who it looks like they were told they had to dress up, so thanks for dressing up for us tonight. All right, Councilmember Ray.
All right, Camp O'Verde, come on up, coach come up, bring the bling with ya. So this group in front of us are volleyball players from Camp O'Verde High School, they had an alright season last year, they ended up winning the 5A State Championship, let's give them a round of applause for that. They've already promised they'll be back here in a year again to celebrate as repeat champions, so there's no pressure. We're gonna pass the microphone over to Coach Brian Hiapo, who's gonna tell us a little bit about the team and then we're gonna pass the microphone down and have each of the people up here say their name, what year they are in school, if you graduated, and what position or what role on the team you had.
Thank you. Like I said, my name is Brian Hiapo, coach of the great Camp O'Verde volleyball team. I'm excited this year, we had some great talent, we even have the ability to win states and again, from my very first practice, we focused on the road to states and we're grateful that through the diligence of our, our discipline of, of training as well as our parents, our support from our administration and our athletic directors and our teachers and friends and coaches, we're able to accomplish great feats. It's a wonderful thing and these boys again, will have the opportunity to do it again if they work hard and continue to look forward to that road to states.
I'm Lauren, I was the manager this year and I'm a senior.
I'm Ryan Hutchins, I'm a senior and I played middle.
I'm Jackson Ryan, I play middle and I'm a senior.
I'm Jacob McKee, I'm a senior and I'm a setter.
Hi, I'm Derek, I was a middle blocker and I'm a senior.
I'm Jacob Bright, I'm a senior and I play libero.
I'm Tyler Paulson, I was a setter and I just graduated.
I'm Dorian Phillips, I was middle blocker and I just graduated as well.
I'm Kate Irvine, I just graduated and I played right side.
Calvin Crizon, I'm a junior, I'm an outside hitter.
Jesse Lauder, I'm a senior and I played outside hitter.
I'm Tyler Watts, I'm also senior and I played middle.
I'm Tom Tram, I'm a, I graduated and I played opposite.
I'm Trace Lauder, I'm a sophomore and I was a setter.
Let's give this team one more round of applause. So we have a certificate of congratulations, one for each member of the team and I'll just read a portion of it, it says, "As the Mayor of Town of Gilbert, it's a pleasure to extend congratulations to you for winning the 5A Boys Volleyball Championship as a valued member of the Camp O'Verde High School Boys Volleyball Team. As a volleyball player, your hard work and long hours of practice have paid off and brought such great honor to your community. Congratulations on a well-deserved victory and incredible milestone in sports. On behalf of the Gilbert Town Council, we congratulate you on your success and applaud you for representing Gilbert with pride." Let's come on up and get a picture.
that's impressive that you're back for this, so that's great. All right, we do have some communications from citizens and this might be a good transition time if you don't want to stay for much longer in the council meeting, I think scouts have to stay for a little bit longer, but yeah, that's what I was gonna recommend. You're welcome. I always wanted adults to give me an out when I was a kid, so, all right, yep.
Well Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
We'd like to invite Mark DiStassi. Mark, if you could share us your name, come to the front podium, share us your name for the record and place a residency, we'll give you three minutes to address the council, thank you for coming. I'm Mark DiStassi, I'm actually the Director of Donor Relations with House of Refuge, my residency is here in Gilbert and Mayor, it's not all that often that the audience leaves right before I step up, it's usually when I start talking, but on behalf of Nancy Marion and the staff at House of Refuge and especially our residents, we thank you very, very much for all your support and all the support of the Town of Gilbert and I actually have a little gift, I should have brought it up, but on behalf of Nancy Marion, I'll just bring it up here real quick and I'll leave it, but thank you all very, very much for your support of House of Refuge.
Real quick, I, I would just like to, the, the thanks goes to you all and the good work that you're doing and I'm excited for this new opportunity, I think we're gonna work together to make sure that our students at the ASU Polycampus have a Thanksgiving dinner this year, so we got another project to work together on and I think that'll be a great opportunity, so thank you for the work that you do.
We'd like to invite Joe Guusik to the podium, Joe, if you can share us your name for the record and place a residency, we'll give you three minutes to address the council, thank you.
our beautiful community, as I always tell you, I'm Joe Guusik, I'm the lovable, slightly annoying American citizen, I'm the education Lorax. I heard somebody speak about the water tower last time and I, I just wanted to share just a little bit of a different take. This is a picture from a long, long time ago and we can see that, I can't really tell exactly what the color is, but it's not what it is today. Several, from time after that, this is a little bit of a picture, probably in the 1930s, I guess this is the great floods of that time and you can see the water tower, once again, isn't the color of it today. Now you can see it several years later and, oh by the way, I have to give credit, this copyright's to Historical Society, I'd get in trouble if I didn't give them credit for that. As you can see, it looks silver at that point and I think some people know that to be the case. Now you can see it in its current form of today, white. What does it mean when we have a town asset and something is white? Would we light up the LDS Temple other than in its ambient light? Would we add, light up the Vatican? Would we light up the Statue of Liberty? How about the Capitol, Washington Monument and the Lincoln Memorial? Now we do have a building, that's a private building and they, they are very proud to show a lot of different colors on its building anytime, but it is a private building and they have that right. Now our, our tower isn't a Christmas tree, but I think we could do something just a little bit different to make us unique. Now this is what you see at the Luxor, now I'm not saying that you have to do that, maybe we put an American flag on the top of it. At the end of the day, I had to ask myself this question, what would Bobby Gilbert do? As he sees it in the white, off in the distance, for me, I don't want it to be a symbol that divides the community, we're a golden rule town, we're an education first town. And the very best picture I love, and I really do love this picture and I'm glad that they have it up on our social media every time, that they remind us that we all love Gilbert. I understand that we all want to have a say and I even joked with Councilman Ray, you know, do I have to make my own association to light it up in orange? I, I would never do that. So that's just my suggestion, just a different point of view, nothing here, at the end of the day, it's up to you and the staff, thank you.
Thank you Joe. I believe that completes our communications from citizens and we'll move now to our consent calendar and look to Vice Mayor to assist.
Thank you Mayor, this is gonna be a little bit of navigating here, so please bear with me. I move that we approve Agenda Items 2 through 13. We also move to approve Agenda Item 10A with, I have to make a correction here and I should have to read it in the record here. Item 10A, property sale, consider the authorizing town staff to conduct the, an auction on September 17th, 2019 for Gilbert surplus land parcel number 304-55011R. The parcel is approximately 36.6 acres, generally located south of the 202 freeway, north of Jermaine Road, east of Gilbert Road and west of Lindsay Road. The purpose of the auction is to identify the highest bidder for cash pursuant to ARS Move 10B, 10C, 11A, 14A, 16A, 16B, excuse me, oh, my fault, yep, those are public hair, my fault. And then I would like to also include that we continue Agenda Item 19 to the September 5th council meeting. Move Agenda Item 22 to consent and motion to appoint Mark Beasley to the Parks and Recs Board to fill the remainder of the term beginning on August 15th, 2019 and ending May 12th, 2021, which is my birthday.
Oh.
How about that?
Second.
Vice Mayor Cook, and item number 21 should be continued to September 5th as well, or 20, sorry.
Yes, and Agenda Item 20 to continue to September 5th.
My second will cover that.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. That motion, I think we need to clear, yeah, sorry, we're gonna need to revote everybody. That motion, oh, Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Thank you, that motion carries the 7-0 vote. That moves us to our public hearing agenda items, I will open the public hearing, oh, I guess first question is, do we have any requests to speak on public hearing items?
Mayor, we don't.
Okay, does the council wish to discuss any public hearing items? Okay, seeing none, I will open the public hearing on Agenda Items 14, 15, 16, 17, 18 and 21. Also, 14A, 16A and 16B, I will close the public hearing on those agenda items and entertain a motion.
Mayor, we'd like to move that we approve Agenda Items 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 21 and also Agenda Items 14A, 16A, 16B. Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Aye.
Thank you Councilmember Taylor, that motion carries with a 7-0 vote. That completes our public hearing items in a very efficient way, so thank you to everyone. That moves us to our administrative items, Agenda Item 23. We'd like to invite staff forward, just in case there's any questions, is that Amy? We've reviewed the items in our packet. Sorry, that came up fast. Surprise. They are efficient, if nothing else. We have several resolutions in front of us and I, I don't know that I want to waste a ton of time doing the, the actual resolutions because we've seen them, we can read them, they're all outlined in our packet. I am acting as the Resolutions Chair at the League Conference and I have a few opinions of my own on a few of the actual items, but I think in the role that I have at the League Conference, while I will be representing Gilbert, I'm also trying to manage 90 cities and towns voting on resolutions, so understanding all of that, are there any comments or questions or concerns that our council has that they'd like to express to Amy or Renee or question, I guess questions specifically? If you have any concerns or anything else, you're welcome to direct those to me as I'll be representing the town. Sound good? That kinda keeps you there, but you don't have to.
Yeah.
Present on all the resolutions. Sound good? Okay, so does anyone want to, does anybody have any questions for Renee or Amy? Vice Mayor.
So Mayor, the first one, I was part of that committee, this particular.
Are you talking about the budget and finance?
Yeah, budget finance.
Number one, okay.
So.
Oh, thank you.
I fully understand what the intent was, Superior has a individual that owns some property in their downtown and they basically were trying to figure a way to get this particular property owner to be motivated to do something with the property and I think that what they were suggesting, and I understand that, you know, that they want to encourage this individual to do something with the property, I wasn't a very strong supporter of this particular resolution. There seemed to be a lot of just more research I thought needed to be done and so forth, so, so I was kinda neutral in the meeting, but again, I just didn't feel like a strong position on this one.
I did have a chance to meet with the Mayor of Superior and their city manager on this particular agenda item and I think the struggle for them, and correct me if I'm wrong, you two, because you're the experts truly on this, but there is actually an incentive through our tax code for someone to allow a piece of property to fall into disrepair and so when they aren't keeping up even just broken windows and, and what we would consider to be in the Town of Gilbert health safety issues and because of the way that those are codified in the tax law, it actually incentivizes an individual to allow, and, and in one particular case, there is one of the properties that's currently on the market through real estate for $175,000, that's the asking price and yet in the actual tax records, they have that property, same property valued at $15,000, so they're only getting taxed on $15,000 worth of property when the asking price is $175,000. So I, I think if nothing else, and again, just the resolution tells league staff to work with legislators to find a solution, I don't think anybody's dictating what the solution is specifically, but this was actually one where I thought, this may not be direct, directly impacting Gilbert, but it is absolutely affecting our rural communities in a big way and when their entire budget is, you know, $2 million, an annual budget, but they have to spend $20,000, you know, to clean up a building that fell down because it was in disrepair, I don't know that that's a fair.
Yeah, and I think for me, I was more worried if this went down the road where, you know, they would put, where government may put some serious, you know, teeth into this where they would be, in my sense, out of bounds. So again, I just, you know, was more open for further discussion, understanding, you know, find out best practices from other communities that have, you know, situations like this, so again, I just was neutral, but I appreciate your, your feedback.
Councilmember Anderson.
I sit on the NSQL, that's the name of it, isn't it? Yeah. And we had a couple of items that are coming up on, for, on resolutions, one had to do with short-term rentals and by entities such as Airbnb or private owners and this really hasn't been an issue for us in Gilbert yet, it may be at this point, but it's a very serious problem for some of the rural communities, just like the mayor was talking about for other issues and they're going forward, basically the bottom line is they're asking there be more local control because they're being controlled by the state right now and they would like to have a little bit more local control. The other has to do with passage of the ERA and when we voted on this, most, the other representatives there had already had a tense to talk to their council and they had actually voted on whether to support the resolution or not, I told them we hadn't talked about it and so I voted no and I would vote no again for other, that's going forward also, I think. And we also have a resolution that, a third that you may have seen in the minutes, it's actually being sponsored by us, by the Town of Gilbert, has to do with working with the other communities in the valley and establishing possible district that could fund certain amenities in the valley, but we'll talk about that more later.
And just to clarify, that is not one of the items that's moving forward and just also to clarify the actual process, anyone can submit, any individual within the state can actually submit an item for these individual committees to, to examine and sort of work through and many of them start on the agenda and maybe take two or three years of fleshing out and getting more data and thank you to both of you who sit on those committees, the time that you guys spend doing that and representing Gilbert. Any other questions or comments? Oh, Amy.
Yeah, Mayor, if I could, just on the short-term rental one, I know there was legislation that was passed last year, so part of my feedback would be maybe a wait and see approach and see how, you know, the newly implemented regulations are being handled by the cities and if that's taking care of some of the issues in, in Sedona and some of, kind of our northern city areas, as well as just, I know part of the policy that was outlined in our packet was an emphasis on regulating investment-owned properties differently than privately owned and so I would just make a note of caution there about treating people who own, own properties for investment purposes any differently than any other kind of resident, so that would be my two cents.
I think for the feedback that I've received is with the implementation of the new laws that were passed during last legislative session, we would only have about three months worth of data to really analyze that information before we'd be basically asking the legislators to take additional action, so I 100% agree that we need to maybe take a harder look at what's already being done and see if that's addressing the challenges. I am sensitive to the fact that in some communities, the type of Airbnb investments that are taking place are pricing out some of the other residents of those communities, again, it's also a free market and we do support that, I think, by and large in the state of Arizona, so cautiously not wading into that side of the argument, just, but just aware that we probably. that we probably need more data and information to see if the steps that we've taken will mitigate some of the challenges that have existed. Okay, heard you loud and clear, thanks, Amy. All right, seeing no other, I don't think we're voting?
Nope, that was just for feedback.
Terrific, thank you, thank you Renee and Amy, and we're looking forward to the League Conference next week.
And we will touch base with Mayor and Council on the resolutions passed next week at the League Conference.
Absolutely, thank you. Right, are there any boards, commission, or committee reports from the council?
Mayor, I will report that Councilmember Ray and Vice Mayor Cook and I are plugging away on the land development code, and I have to give Amy Thames from the Planning Department major kudos because she is doing an extraordinary job keeping that all straight and moving us forward and keeping us on task, if you will, because sometimes we can get off on a tangent, but she's doing a great job. We've made a huge dent in that document, that document is huge to begin with, and I just wanted to give you a little update on that.
I got a little update from Kyle Maris earlier this week, and I'm really pleased with the progress that you guys have already made, so thanks for sticking with the task. And I know for our Building Code Committee that has been meeting as well, that we are getting really close to being able to work with our stakeholders on a draft document there, and so we'll look forward to those next steps that'll be coming in the next several weeks and months. All right, any other boards, commission, or committee reports? All right, that moves us to future meetings, which we have some agenda items there. The report from our town manager, who's been really quiet tonight, are you sleeping? Did we put you to sleep?
Almost, nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Any report from council on current events?
Mayor, I know that we're wearing purple, and I'm not sure if you're going to make an announcement of that or not, but what I wanted to do, well, as much as I think Councilmember Peterson and myself love purple, it's our favorite color, and purple also represents our Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and in October, we wear purple for this month to recognize and be aware of drowning here in Gilbert. And what I wanted to do is just share a little story, some of you know this, a couple Fridays ago, I had the pleasure of riding along with one of our fire teams, and as we were just about to have dinner, we got a call, and there is a certain sound in the firehouse in our fire station when it's a drowning, and that call and that sound came through the fire station, so I have not been on a call with the team related to any drowning, it was a drowning of a two-year-old, and we rushed into the truck, and I just wanted to say to Chief Joe Bush's team, it was, it was like clockwork and precision as we were driving, how the captain was getting his team prepared during the drive of exactly the things that they needed to do. I mean, all their training and all the things that they have been prepared for, they were en route for that, and I know the adrenaline was very, very high, and when we arrived at the home, the PD team had beat the fire team, and I was watching our police officers administering CPR to the two-year-old, and the fire team, just again, precision, just focus, it was just spectacular to watch how quickly they engaged with the young person. And as I came around the corner, the little two-year-old started crying, and it was, it was just a marvelous sight for me to see that, and it was because of all of our first responders, getting there quickly, doing what they are trained to do, and, you know, that team saved one. I mean, we hear about the ones that we lose, but we saved one, and it was just fantastic. So as I like to share, we cannot, as parents, as adults, as grandparents, we cannot leave without any intention, any of our kids, by themselves in the pool. We have to be there at all times, it's a must that you have to be there, so I just share and encourage that all adults that are responsible in watching kids at pools, that you do that, because it was a terrifying call for me, and I was grateful to see our team respond the way they did. I know those parents and their neighbors and their families were extremely grateful, and I even thought about maybe we should invite our team and thank them for that at maybe a future meeting, but anyways, thank you for the time.
Thank you for sharing that, Eddie, and thanks for also working so closely with our public safety teams. I know many of you have spent a lot of time with our public safety teams to learn and understand more and more about what they are seeing every day, and there just isn't enough words for us to thank them for their efforts, so thank you for that, and thank you to the council for supporting this initiative. Any more council reports? Yep.
Selfie, Mayor?
I've never done this on the dais.
From the dais, I think it's appropriate, isn't it? Everybody look this way. Amy? Perfect.
Fit to our social media specialist on the council to make that happen, yeah. All right, Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you for that, Vice Mayor. I don't know how many of you subscribe to Arizona Highways out in the audience, it's actually an internationally known magazine, and I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention that each year they do a photo contest, which is very well-known throughout the country and also throughout the world. Two of the top five photographs this year were out at the Repair and Preserve at Water Ranch, so congratulations to those people.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Did you have one as well, Councilmember Peterson, or was it the City Hall selfie? The City Hall selfie day. I just wanted to direct everyone's attention, we did approve the calendar for next year, that we will be moving our council meetings from Thursday nights to Tuesday nights starting in January of 2020, and I think that will help staff as well as all of us to get as much done as possible during the week, and I appreciate everyone's flexibility on that. We've also settled on October 24th as being our retreat day, Fall Retreat Day, so I wanted to confirm, I think we had to hold on the 24th and the 25th of October, it will be October 24th. I also wanted to let Councilmember Amy Yentes know that we know she had a birthday, and we wish you a really happy birthday. We have it on really good authority that your favorite things are Frost Gelato, and wait, there was, what was the other one?
Red Velvet Cake.
Well, I knew that one, but then there was one other too, but Red Velvet Cake, and so we made sure that we had some of that for you today, so happy birthday for all of us.
Toasted marshmallow, what is that place? The toasted marshmallow?
Toasted malo?
Right.
Yeah, yum, great. Oh, that's another favorite? Okay, now we know. And then also to Vice Mayor Cook, he has suffered a loss in his family, and we were all really sorry to hear that, and we wanted to make sure that you knew that we care deeply for you and for your family, so heartfelt.
Thank you, and it's the joy of a community that reaches out and loves you and surrounds you with love, it's, you know, it's the Gilbert way, and thank you from staff and the team, it's been very nice to receive that, so.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone that participated tonight, this meeting is adjourned. Let them eat cake.